I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And roll call please.
Good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Director Nelson will be absent for Director Bianco.
Here.
And Director Aguilar.
Here.
And we'll just note Director Nelson will be absent for the meeting today.
Good, thank you. We do have a quorum. Do we have any additions, deletions, or additions for today's agenda?
No, sir.
Is there anyone wishing, might have somebody online wishing? We might have somebody online wishing? Is there anybody there?
We do not.
In the room, jumping up to the podium, so we'll move on? In the room, jumping up to the podium, so we'll move on?
That's usually my line.
Here we are on, we're already at 5:00 A., hopping. So here we are on, we're already at 5:00 A., right?
Yes, sir.
Can we skip something?
Yes, sir. We can skip that one if you'd like.
Yeah. So Steve here. So we have a number of retirements that we are recognizing. Steve Bigley, presentation on, this is two months' worth. We have Steve Bigley, who will do a presentation on Welding Chief Crew with 24 years. Ty Merga, Welding Chief Crew with 24 years. I believe he's not here. And then Matt Lotzenheiser, Auto Shop Supervisor with 20 years. And Jeff Verlinich, to those last three who are six years. So congratulations to those last three who are not in attendance, but then we do have Steve Bigley here. Steve is a third generation San Luis Obispo born and he raised in Palm Springs. He attended College of the Desert and Cal Poly San Luis Obispo where he received bachelor's of science degrees in environmental science and plant in Coachella before an entry-level job, lab job, opened at CB Detraction Plant in Coachella before an entry-level job, water technician position in engineering where he grew, after a couple of years, he left the lab to fill a water technician position in environmental engineering where he grew into supervisor and manager roles and responsibilities for the environmental source control, water quality, water resources, and laboratory divisions. Since 2013, he's served as director, also worked on drinking department overseeing these divisions. Steve's also worked on drinking water work groups and committees for the National Drinking Water Advisory Council, Quality Committee, and Chair of Aqua Safe Drinking Water Subcommittee and President of the Western Quality Committee, Chair of Aqua Safe Drinking Water Subcommittee, and President of the Western Coalition Coalition. The unique water conditions found in the Coachella Valley and the air regulations that are unique versions found in the Coachella Valley and the arid west. Off of work, Steve cares for family, manages properties, and enjoys biking and traveling with his wife Nancy. Their favorite vacation spot is La Ropa Beach in Z Y. Your speech, so we're gonna, Mexico. So congratulations, Steve. You already gave your speech, so we're gonna have a short one. But we do have a little something for you, so come on up.
Congratulations, that's free.
We don't have a, and no photographer. We don't have a photographer. Anybody have an iPhone?
We're gonna improvise today. It won't be the quality.
If it's an iPhone 14, they work really well.
Okay, one, two, three. Okay.
Thanks, Scott.
All right, now it's your turn.
I'm so glad, last month, my last board meeting, I made what Peter called the last longest speech. So I'll clear the space for your agenda. Nothing more to say other than, you know, I certainly appreciate all the great people I've met here at the district and keep up the good work. Let me know if I can help.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, I sometimes wonder whether it was a mistake to make Steve the department head way back when, but no, not at all.
No, why would you say?
Probably one of the better moves I made.
Why would you say that? Okay.
Just to keep him on his toes, you know? Keep him guessing.
Jim's never happy. Good. So on to the consent calendar, items 6A through K. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
So motion of second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed 4-0. Nothing pulled, so on to action. Hi, Elmer, good morning.
Good morning.
8A, why don't you go ahead and take that, Sunbird?
Good morning, President Powell and Board Directors. This item for your consideration is to authorize the General Manager to execute a consolidation and sanitary service agreement with the Sunbird Mobile Home Park in Thermo, California. The Sunbird Mobile Home Park has been identified as a priority property for consolidation into CVWD's sanitary sewer system. We're in the process of obtaining grant funding from the Clean Water State Revolving Fund to construct the necessary sewer facilities. The consolidation agreement outlines responsibilities between Sunbird and CVWD as a requirement for funding. I'm available if you have any further questions regarding this item.
I have a question.
Yes.
Please, thank you. So, and Carrie's here, she probably knows about this, but on 66th and Middleton, this kind of kitty corner from the school, there was an affordable housing project that had been proposed by the Housing Coalition on Middleton, and I'm wondering if this, will this line help them at all?
Yes, it will.
Have they submitted anything, do you know, on plans for that project?
We had regular conversations with them at the DAP meeting, but no, we haven't seen one.
Okay, great. So this will help.
We haven't seen any affordable settlements on it, yeah.
But to just add to that, the, whatever size of a line that you end up putting is contemplating that you're gonna serve that area there, so there's future growth embedded into that pipe.
Right, and these are, these are grant funds, it's just amazing, good job. Is there a motion to approve 8A?
Yes, I'll move approval for 8A.
I'll second.
Yeah, great. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed 4-0. And then...
Thanks, Elmer.
Yeah, thanks, Elmer. B, David.
Mid Canal Power. Karen Wilson, good morning, go ahead. Purpose of this item is to authorize the General Manager to execute a check request to the Imperial Irrigation District in the amount of $515,775.71, excuse me, to bring power to check structure number 14, plus 59.6 for the Mid Canal Storage Project. We have a three-way funding agreement with San Diego County Water Authority, San Luis Obispo, Indian Water Authority, and CVWD at a 61, 13, 26 percent commitment for each agency to support this project. And with that, I'll leave it up to, open it up for questions.
There's not very much negotiation in that, so. No. Well, the fact that they're able to do it is good. Yeah, that's, that's true. That they're able to provide the power. I'll make a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Great, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed 4-0. Thanks, David. Okay, so this is on to, hi, good morning, Conservation, HC, go ahead.
Okay, good morning, President Powell, members of the board. So staff is recommending that the board rescind prior board action that enacted the demand reduction action 3.11 of the district's water shortage contingency plan whereby we increased the turf rebate to $3 per square foot, so this would reduce it back to $2. This action is needed to stabilize the conservation programs budget. We're also recommending, kind of, as the process, that any application that we've received that's currently in process be given until the end of the year to complete their application to qualify for the current rebate. And then, as of today, any application will be, would be eligible for the $2 per square foot. If the board prefers to provide customers a final opportunity to qualify for the increased rebate, we would just recommend that the requirement be that the application be complete by that date. So, and that would mean that we've received, we've received all the documents necessary to schedule a pre-site inspection.
By, when you say the end of the year, are you talking fiscal year?
Yes, June 30. So those, that would be, we'd be giving those applications we've received but aren't completed yet, so we're missing some part of the application. We'd be giving them till the end of the fiscal year to complete their application to still qualify for the increased rebate. And then, I had one quick correction to the board action item. So the city of Rancho Mirage has informed us that they plan to continue to offer the $3 per square foot incentive for their residential customers until their funding runs out, which they approximately have about 77,000 available. So they offer $3 for residential and $1 for commercial H-Way.
I have a question. If somebody, if somebody had applied and they were in process, maybe, you know, had the inspection or scheduled the inspection, would, under the higher amount, would they still qualify for that amount?
Yeah, so what we're saying is, so in process, that means to us that they haven't submitted all the, all the required paperwork to receive a pre-site inspection. So we don't schedule those pre-site inspections until we've received all the application, the W-9, the site plans, photographs from the customer. So if they've submitted something and maybe they're missing just the W-9 or one piece, they would be able to complete that application packet by the end of the fiscal year to still qualify for the increased rebate. But what we're proposing for new applications going forward is, we either, we can say anything as of today is at the $2, or if we want to give them some wiggle room to still qualify for this increased incentive, that we say that it has to be a completed application packet by X date. So all materials necessary to schedule that pre-site. Because if we, if we do the same thing and essentially give customers until the end of the fiscal year to submit a completed application, then it's essentially the same as just extending the $3 incentive through the end of the fiscal year. You know, we'd probably receive a bunch of partial applications within that timeframe and...
No, I get it.
So, so you have, so you're, it sounds like there's two options, cut the, cut it off and just keep the ones in process and give them a chance to finalize all their paperwork so you could do the pre-inspection, or just completely leave it open till the end of the fiscal year, which would allow new applicants to still try to get their pre-inspection before the end of the fiscal year.
I think, we're, sorry, what we're recommending is, anything in process, we give them through the end of the fiscal year to complete that application and still qualify for the increased incentive.
So that, there's only one recommendation.
And then the second part of that is, how are we gonna move forward in reducing it? So we can say any application submitted today and moving forward is at the $2, or if you want to provide one last opportunity to, then we...
That's what I meant, I'm hearing two options, but just give me one more thing. So what I haven't heard is your, your estimate on what the difference in budget is, is, if you do that. It sounds like you already have some in process, which I imagine you have a calculation on square footage for those projects. And so what's, what's your best guess on what the difference in budget would be?
So, applications in process, I think is around $360,000. So those are ones that, again, we haven't received all of the documents. So, in the BAI and things like that, where it says turf money is reserved, we consider it reserved once we've done the pre-site inspection, because that's when we verify the square footage that's gonna come out. So that, that's, that's different from the reserve funds. Reserve funds, the most up-to-date number I have is about 5.5 million in reserves, so those have verified a pre-site inspection.
5.5 million?
In reserved, or, well, yeah, so we've done, completed the pre-site inspection, we've verified the square footage, and so those are turf conversion projects in processing.
So the funds are in cumbre.
We've committed for that. Yeah, we've...
All right, so, so what I'm looking at just in the BAI is that we've had, we've blown our budget, we're gonna blow our budget on the conservation program by a little, a little under $1 million, half a million to a million, somewhere in there?
Yeah, so there's a couple of things going on. So we increased the budget 11.5 million, right, and we, the intent was to utilize those drought penalty funds to replenish that, and we ended up collecting just 10.6, so we're about $900,000 short of what we increased the budget by there. And then in addition to that, what's been reserved or in process over budget. We believe there is some flexibility, because we don't carry the budget forward from fiscal year to fiscal year, so the payout is based on when the project is completed. So there are projects in process or reserved that, I mean, these numbers are assuming everything gets done by June 30th, but there will be projects that go into next fiscal year and get paid out in next fiscal year. We also have the grant funding, which is eligible for turf conversion projects, so there's three separate grants there, and then about 1.4 million in those grant funds. And so we think we'll have the flexibility in utilizing the drought penalty revenue, the grants, the projects that carry forward into the next fiscal year. And, I mean, really, that's when we'll have a better sense of how many projects actually get completed this year, where we end up exactly, and then we'll have an impact on next year's conservation budget, which we kept the same, we didn't change, so it's, but next year we'll have a better idea of what the impact of this year has on, on that budget.
I think I would prefer to just allow it open until June 30th. It, it could have an adverse impact on domestic rates, it's gonna force us to raise rates.
I mean, it could...
Just remember that.
Yeah, I'd rather just stop it. We're already in the red.
Or it just, or it just means next year we have no budget for rebates.
Yeah, but we're still gonna have a program for $2 next year.
Not if we can save the money.
Not if we have, if we don't have any money, if all these projects leak into next year and utilize that.
We've had this $3 thing in place for quite a while, I mean, people...
Just over a year.
Just over a year. It just takes a long time. I mean, it takes a long time to get people to come out to your house, you know, you have to schedule appointments sometimes a month in advance, and, and then you have, and then sometimes you'd like to have two bids, you know? But the people that have already initiated it, they're gonna, they're gonna get the $3 if they finish it by, by the end of June, or at least get inspected by the end of June.
It's the people that haven't even started yet.
I don't know. I, it's, you're blowing your budget. It's gotta come from somewhere, and I, and it's an unknown number, because if we make a press release saying, get it in now, you might get, who knows what you're gonna get? I would think anyone that's leaning in the direction of doing it would have, during the last year, would have done it, because it's been pretty, three, three bucks is a pretty good number.
Well, now that we don't have drought penalties, some of the incentive to do this has been reduced.
That also.
As has the funding stream.
So I, I'm, I'll make a motion that, that we go with the recommendation to keep those in process and give them until the end of the fiscal year to, to complete their pre-inspection, and that starting now, today, after, until we take action, that we go back to the $2 per square foot.
Yeah, I'll second that. Been a good program. We don't want to give a little time, I mean, even if it's 10 days or two weeks before we tell everybody it's $2 today.
I mean, our only recommendation is, if we do give any time, we would require that the application be completed by that date, that they...
No, I know.
Provide all the documents, so that we don't receive a bunch of partial applications, reserving funds, and then have...
It's gonna be hard to squeeze all that in.
An indefinite time to complete those applications.
The, the 5.5 in reserve, you would consider all those incomplete applications, or that's...
Yeah, what we report as reserved is, we've already gone out, we've received the entire application, and we've already gone out and completed a pre-site inspection, so they've already started those projects. What's not in there are the ones that are incomplete applications, so we haven't done any pre-site. So those could be withdrawn, I mean, a lot of people submitted applications and, or started the applications, decided not to do the project, but, I mean, if, if we tell them, you're still eligible for the $3, and if you don't complete this application, it's gonna go down to 2, they might finish them, so.
Who, I know you mentioned Rancho Mirage, but it's, but it's Palm Desert Indian Wells also?
They don't, they've spent all their funds, and I don't expect them to increase...
Rancho, Rancho still has some?
Yes.
They started with a much higher number. Yeah, they did 3.6.
Yeah, they've increased their funding a number of times.
Yeah.
They really went all in on that.
So we have a motion of a second?
We have a motion of a second. I know we, we're not completely agreeing. I, I just think logistically, it would be hard to squeeze all that in, you know, if there's a run on this thing, because they know that it's ending. I don't, not fair. All right, go ahead.
And I, I just, I just added, that, that's been my concern with, with staff, I've had conversations with them about, about making sure that, that we don't, we don't blow the budget, and at the last meeting, I brought up the, the grant, and so I am happy that we at least have that cushion, but it's not very big, it's a million point something. And so if, if we blow through that, the only other way to make up that revenue is through rate increases, through domestic, I imagine. So that, that's something that, that I'm concerned about, and so that's, that's the reason I'm leaning to just not, not, you know, get to that point.
I agree. Yeah, okay, well, why don't we vote then?
May I ask, can we get clarification on the motion? I just want to make sure we have it from Director Strucker.
Yeah, the motion was that we go with the recommendation that we keep the applications in process and give them until the end of the fiscal year to schedule their pre-inspection, so that they can qualify for the $3 per square foot, and that starting today, we go back to the $2 per square foot.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Right, okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? If that's passed for, thanks.
Thanks, Adam.
Thank you.
Yeah, that'll be fine, they still get two bucks.
Yeah.
Great in communications, what do we have? Nothing on the attachment, okay. Oh, what am I looking at? These things are so finicky.
We had two, we had one from the gentleman that's reappearing.
Yeah, you're right, I saw it, I see it on the live on, there were two, right?
Yes.
Resolve, got it, thank you.
I think I need one of those pens with the little squishy top.
Yeah, because whenever you push the thing, you gotta expand your screen, otherwise your thumb is too big.
Your thumbs.
Theory of relativity. Okay, so on to information items. We have the reserve, this is what we were gonna do in the study session that didn't happen, the district reserve policy, and then the state water project budget. Rick, good morning.
Good morning.
Go ahead.
This item is the, the ongoing journey of budget and rates that we've been talking about the last several months. In March, we covered a few items, a big one was review of the district's debt, where we are and where we're headed, as well as the CIP, which is a large driver of our funding needs. Last month, we covered the, in detail, the operating budget and other major revenues that play into this. And then this month, we've been talking really about two, let's see if this works, there we go, two, two major items. One is the reserves policy, which is an integral component to rates overall. It's one of the, the primary pieces that, that works in conjunction with our overall Prop 218 process to justify rates, as well as to know how much we have available, either to keep them steady, or if we need to raise rates, which we're not proposing, to build reserves. And the other piece, which goes hand in hand with the miracle year, was the state water project budget. We knew that this year would have a lot of flux, and so it was a good time, after we got the latest and greatest data, especially on the allocation, on what the budget should be, which drives what our recommended tax rate should be with that. And then lastly, we had a follow-up item from last month on some options for the canal rate increases, we'll go over that. And probably most important is, at the end, getting direction or input from the board on at least which options to put together the final recommendation and documents for June, for the board's consideration.
Good.
And so with everything that we've been talking about, I wanted to start first and foremost with probably the most important thing, which is, what are we actually asking for and, and believe are necessary for rate increases right up front? And so the, the, the big highlight that we were able to cover in the last couple of months is for all of the replenishment funds, so West, East, and Mission Creek, 0 percent increase on those. This is requiring a use, and we can say that, we are planning to use significant amount of reserves to be able to keep rates lower. This comes into play heavily on the replenishment funds, with the West replenishment fund using over $5 million in reserves to pay for the, the Roseville Real Bravo water. Otherwise, this would have caused a multi-double digit increase on the, on the rack rate, which would have impacted the domestic rate as well. On the domestic rates, obviously a primary one that we've been talking about, a 5.5% increase there, which comes in at a little less than $2 per month for a typical customer, bringing us to a little over $36 for a total bill for an average domestic customer. On the sanitation rates, looking at an 8.5% increase, but that translates to a little over $2 a month there, bringing us to a little under $29 for a typical monthly amount, although these go on the tax bills. This does include that 8.5% is made possible by the, the reallocation of discretionary property tax, we've covered that the last couple of months, a 3.4 million, otherwise it would have been roughly double that we were looking at. And then on canal, obviously we have two different major classes of rates there, the base rate for agricultural and then class two for, for the others. Depending on which one, because the surcharges come in a different amount specifically for the Quagga, you're looking at either a 4.5 or, or a 3.8% increase. This translates to either for the class ones, $1.70 per acre foot, or a little over $4 per acre foot there. And I did, I did want to note, even though we're talking a lot about reserves, the, the discussion of reserves in no way drives any of these, these rate increases. The reserves discussion is mostly about how much we think we need to keep going forward, and so that's, that's the primary driver for the reserves discussion, is that at least staff believes there's ample justification for maintaining our current reserve balances. So getting into this, wanted to do at least a little bit of a, of a high-level overview on really what are the, the primary purpose and benefits of reserves themselves. It's, it's critical to get clear on what the purpose is, because that drives what are you really reserving in terms of how much, and what is it for, and what you can use it for, and so clarity here is, is important. And so, at least as far as what staff is recommending, it boils down to two principal things. We need cash on hand in order to, in essence, provide services. We have to pay our vendors, we have to pay for the construction projects, the, the reserves enable our service. And on the other side, there's, the other major component is, reserves allow us to keep stable rates. Otherwise, we would be subject to whatever the revenue amounts happen to be in that year, or the expenses happen to be, which change significantly from period to period, you would be adjusting your rates constantly, and, and that isn't advantageous to anyone. um, from period to period, you would be adjusting your rates constantly, um, and, and that isn't advantageous to anyone. And so this allows for stability, um, for, for rates. And so, these benefits break down into a couple of major groups, the, the one is that they, they provide shock absorber ability. In essence, they cover the unanticipated things, um, or the things that are anticipated, but we just don't know when they're going to hit. Uh, there are risks with that, we foresee things like earthquakes and other things which we, we know are a very real possibility, or a piece of the system failing. You just can't reliably predict exactly when it's going to happen, so you have reserves in place to cover those, so you're not doing rate increases every time, um, something unanticipated happens. Um, but they do provide other benefits, which are really important to, to talk about. Um, one, and this came into play, uh, even recently during the, the, uh, COVID pandemic, cash on hand gives us freedom, uh, to take advantage of market opportunities, for instance, buying in bulk. Um, it gets a lot harder to feel comfortable to make large purchases, store up on inventory, um, if we're scrimping on cash, and so taking advantage of, of opportunities there, or, um, uh, even things as if, uh, we found, let's say, a water deal, um, or a transfer. It's a lot easier, uh, to feel comfortable to make a large purchase of, of water that we weren't anticipating, um, or something similar, if you have the cash on hand, versus trying to, to scurry around and try and put together the funding. Um, and similarly, uh, it does give breathing room for making financial decisions, if an emergency were to happen, um, or something else, a major break in the system, uh, you don't wanna feel pressured to have to take the, the immediate, um, solution, sometimes waiting, waiting things out, look, being able to, to put together a better funding package or something similar. Um, so it allows you some time to go and do your research and, and to respond. This one is, is not as often talked about, but it does, when it happens, it's, becomes very important. Um, having our own cash balance and, and, and enough to deal with the risks that we're talking about, means that we're inherently less reliant on other parties. Um, and, uh, and this comes into play, whether that was a great recession, even now, we're talking about whether the federal treasury's gonna pay its debts. Um, the unanticipated does happen, and you have meltdowns in financial markets, so for instance, if we're going to go issue bonds to pay for CIP, uh, that we have scheduled, um, and next month, we're gonna go issue bonds, then all of a sudden, there's a meltdown in the market, we might have to wait nine months for things to settle, to get acceptable interest rates again to go. Um, well, if you don't wanna hold up the entire CIP schedule, uh, for that, then, uh, cash on hand is, is important here, so it does make us less reliant on others. Um, and then what we have talked about the last few years, which is usually a primary component, um, of reserves, is this, uh, inherent connection between reserves and debt. Uh, and so, the irony is, the less you need debt, the best terms and interest rate that you get for it, so the higher cash balance, the best rates you get, as an, and so that lowers the ongoing expense to customers, because you get, uh, a, a better interest rate. It also is one of the few primary funding sources that we have besides grants, um, to get in substantial reoccurring revenues that aren't borne by a customer one way or the other, whether that's a tax or, or a rate, and so it lowers interest expenses and increases investment revenues, um, which all directly impact rates. And then, uh, so lastly, the, to, in the course of honest discourse, there, there are disadvantages and we have to, to actively manage against these. Um, anything set aside in a reserve is automatically diverting a resource that could be spent on something that may be necessary, so a project or service. And so we have to balance having enough, but not too much, which is what we're talking about. Uh, depending on how much you think you need for reserve, you may have to consider raising rates for that. Uh, you only wanna raise rates for reserves if it's absolutely necessary, sometimes it is, that's not what we're talking about here. Um, and then, uh, as just a policy goal, uh, inherently, uh, if you're collecting rates to help build reserves, or you're, you're saving money, um, to hold on to for the future, you're inevitably having people of today, um, set aside resources for some future benefit. So trying to manage the, the, uh, who's paying and who's benefiting, um, discussion. And then, of course, the big challenge is, if you've got, uh, a significant amount in reserves, the, the perception of why do you need to raise rates, and we've, we've talked a lot about that. Let's see if that goes forward. Come on, there we go. So, uh, in the, the rev- review of the reserves, and I, I know the boards looked at the policy in the last few years, um, there, there is a timeliness to, to wanting to consider, uh, making amendments here, and the, the primary one, uh, as I mentioned before, is the reserve, uh, policy is the most directly influential thing to, to rates that we have. And so as we're considering rates, it's really important to know what we consider as sufficient amounts to keep um, on hand, as well as to justify keeping those from a legal, uh, context on the Prop 218, um, side, and so uh, this year of all years, the state water project has come into focus, especially the financial needs there, um, both because of hydrology and, and, um, frankly, for, for litigation reasons, we have new context coming to us all the time, uh, through the court case, um, feeding into how we think about this, and so um, uh, as staff reviewed this, the, the number one request, I think that we could present to you, is we really need to reconsider how much we keep in the state water project fund and increase that, if the, that's my primary request coming out of the re- reserves policy. Um, the secondary one is, as we reviewed it, there is, there is, uh, I think, a, a misalignment or at least a mismatch on what we currently have in the reserve policy for, um, setting aside monies for capital-related things, our projects, our infrastructure, um, and really the s- the size, complexity and cost of that infrastructure. Uh, and so there's, there's, uh, the major recommendation coming out of this is to shift our thinking from, uh, basing how much we set aside on things like how much we paid for a pipeline sixty years ago and how it's depreciated, um, uh, or, uh, basing on what our five-year CIP happens to be, uh, because these reserves are really set aside for, um, really two major things. If you have major and unexpected failures in the system, let's say, we discover corroded pipe and we've got a large amount of mainline pipe that we weren't planning, um, to do, uh, that's not probably gonna be in the five-year CIP, um, and it's not gonna be, the cost of that's not reflected in the cost sixty years ago that's been depreciated. You need a replacement value. And so some proxy for our current system cost, and, uh, you've heard from other staff, especially through the asset management review, that, uh, in total, our replacement value of our system is, is something to the tune of seven billion dollars. And the three major funds that rates play most directly into domestic sanitation and canal, that's five and a half billion of that seven billion, so it's a, it's a huge replacement need, and, uh, most of these assets are under the ground, it's hard to know their condition, but when they break, we need to respond. Um, also-
So, Rick, can I interrupt you for a sec? I, I'm following what you're saying and I agree with what you just said, but we should clarify in our reserve policy when we would spend the reserves down. Right, I mean, you just described why we need reserves, if we have a catastrophe or whatever, we need the money. But it seems like we're always trying to solve all these problems without using the reserves, and I know we sometimes use them, but we're like, well, we need to get back to the target, well, yeah, and I think we put something in there, well, we need a plan to get back to the target within two years or something like that. But, I just don't see, especially on the overall, and this is where I, I disagree with some of the things you're saying. I mean, you look at our reserves now. I mean, if, if I didn't know what our reserves were, I'd be really worried with your presentation. But, the truth is, we have, at the end of April, we had five hundred ninety-three million dollars in reserve, right? Which is kind of a big number, at least in my world. And even relative to our budgets, big number. I know it's in all these different buckets and some of it you can only use for certain things, but my concern is, as we look at each individual, and this is kind of what we did last time when we skinnyed our reserves down. But, when you look at it, each individual, one, well, we need this level and this level and this level, and you build each one up, the aggregate becomes embarrassingly large, alright, I mean, honestly, if we do all the things you say, you know, what would the aggregate reserve be? Eight hundred, nine hundred, I mean, where's the, what's the number? And, at some point, I think, I'm, as an elected person, I'm thinking, wouldn't that cash be better in our rate payer's pocket? Than in sitting in some account earning some restricted amount of interest, you know, one point seven or whatever it is?
And interest also helps reduce the rate pressure. Because it's basically being invested in return to the customer.
But, my point is, when you look at the aggregate reserves, it's, it gets unwieldy. And, for us to say we're gonna raise rates, which I think we have some agreement on that, and yet we wanna build these reserves even bigger and have a great argument for why. I mean, I, I think we need to make an equally strong argument for how we draw those reserves down and use them. And you talk about the benefits, yeah, use them for this, use them for that, we're always trying to avoid doing that, and, you know what I mean?
Well, I, I think, um, two, two things, at least in the presentation, trying, trying to address that concern. Uh, one is, uh, it's finding the right types of things to use reserves for, so for example, the discussion on the Rosedale. Um, you tend to wanna use reserves for one-time or special, special things. Capital projects are, are a similar sort of, uh, vein of that, it's a single project with a benefit, it's usually very high cost, long benefit, um, sort of thing. In this case, the Roseville water, the thought is, um, it's not gonna be as common in the future, so it's an infrequent expense, where you don't want to, uh, reduce reserves or use them actively for, um, is to cover ongoing expenses that inevitably, you're just gonna draw them down to some point, figure out you're too low, and then you've got this very large gap you're trying to make up the difference for, yeah. And so, uh, the other, so that's the other piece, is, is one, we are trying, we are actually using a significant amount of reserves in this, in this proposed budget. The other is the concept of the prioritization, and so, uh, that I'll get into in the rest of the presentation, but tha- that whole idea is that the reserves aren't, the reserves and the targets are not created equal. There are some which I would beg and plead with you up here, we need at least have this, this level, um, to make sure that we can continue service. Other ones, we should have, um, to deal with risks. Um, and then lastly, those are, I'd say, more aspirational in nature, if we happen to have them, we have justification for keeping them, but you, you may say there are other priorities, policy-wise, to, to spend that money for. Um, and so, it's in that framework of, uh, let's say we have a reserve which I'll, I'll, I'll talk about for capital replacement, it's, it's set aside, the idea is it's there in case, let's say we have that, uh, mainline break, we just discover there's corrosion, we need to do a seventy million dollar, uh, repair, that would be something we didn't anticipate, it's not in the five-year CIP, and you certainly don't wanna raise rates to cover the full amount of debt for that, you would probably use it. And that's what, I think that was, that's what this policy anticipates.
I know that the budget's built on using some reserves, but it, and I haven't looked at this, but I suspect most of that is using the amount of reserve that we have that's above the target, right? We're really not drawing these things down. But I remember when I first got on the board, we had just drawn down the domestic reserve to zero, because they built the Mid Valley Pipeline and blew the whole thing. And, and there was this kind of sense that we had to raise rates to build our reserves back. And we didn't do it. And they built back just, you know, sort of incrementally over time.
Yeah, I, I, I think the, getting down to the, the brass tacks of it all, uh, the primary recommendation is, we should keep reserves where they are, not build them. Ideally, we would build them, but that's the plan, it's just, just-
I know everyone wants bigger reserves.
Yeah, and just, just maintain them, and we're, we're, the justification for that is, although we don't have it in the spending plan, our system is so large and so expensive that if something wrong were to happen, that we felt we had to respond, um, you don't wanna be in a position to having to scramble to fully debt fund, um, something we all think we, needs to happen, when you have no cash and you're gonna get the worst terms available. So that's the, it's risk management, and so that's, that's where we, we need to feel comfortable.
So, so, so what are you proposing then? With this, with, with this whole? So I kind of interrupted him, you're getting, you're getting to that, right?
The, 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 the ultimate proposal is, uh, a plan that keeps reserve levels the same, so the rates reflect that, just maintaining where we are, both in individual funds and in aggregate. With the exception of, um, the state water project fund, and I'll, I'll get into that.
So, I mean, we, we, we spent a lot of time and effort, um, getting these reserves where they are now, because they were, they were getting to the point where we had to raise rates just to keep these reserves at, and keep, keep growing them, and, and that's where we're gonna end up again. You know, this is a va- valiant effort that you're going through, going through all this, I, I get it, I just think maybe it's a little bit too, too much too soon, um, since you haven't been here that long. I, I'll be, I'm just being honest, you know, I, I think it's, it's just, it's too much, I mean, this district has a history of low rates in the state of California, and we've prospered because of it, and so, we, we have to, you know, I understand what you're saying, prices are going up, I see it, I mean, these projects are through the roof. I mean, they're, they're larger and, and it seems like, you know, I've been here, what, six years, and projects have doubled just in, in six years. I, I get it, I just, I, I think we have to have a little bit of restraint, you know, on, on, on our customers and, and what's, what's this, where, where we've, where we've started from and, and where we're going, and, and it needs to be a, a, a slow trans- a small transition or a slow transition. I understand rates need to go up, I mean, we can't keep them the same. But, you, what you're talking about, I think, is, is really big increases.
So, so, so just to make sure we're on the, the same page, the, the rate proposals are intended to cover ongoing expenses and, and debt service. They are not building reserves, uh, at, at all. The policy, um, that is being proposed justifies keeping the reserves that we currently have. Um, instead of some of the funds reflecting, we have large unassigned balances. And the argument is, our system is large enough, you can say, oh, it's worth keeping them, um, at, at least as, as a, a target from a legal framework.
Aren't our reserves above our target?
Right.
That's, that's, that's what, that's the, so, so we are increasing our reserves, so the, the reserve targets that the board has set, that we went through many study sessions to get to, um, just recently, I believe, in the last couple of years, you want to increase those.
I want to increase the amount we think is justified to keep.
Yeah, so we, so, I, I mean, so you are, you are saying you want to res- to increase our reserves from our target, of what we have-
The target, yeah.
Yes.
From what the target, yes.
It's a, it's a-
Right.
So, I, I have a related question, sorry, um, I know we're interrupting here, but I think this is really key stuff. So, um, in the attachments, uh, on the board item, there was a pretty significantly, well, I think well-thought-out, reserve policy, it was two or three pages. And, my concern was, or my question really is, is if, if we inherently adopt that through your recommendations, because that's, that's a new document, correct?
So, so the policy that was attached is the existing policy for reference.
So there are no changes in, in?
Not, not in the language, I wanted to go over the framework with you in the presentation, um, before going through the effort of redlining a, a document, so, so the document's just what's on the books for today. The presentation covers what changes, uh, were contemplated.
That, that would be reflected ultimately.
In, in a future document that redlines.
My question still is, or my comment is that, if we, if we make those changes, then a rating agency is going to be evaluating, uh, performance based on those changes.
So, uh, a, a rating agency, pretty straightforward, just looks at the balance, and they compare that to your CIP and your operating expense, and they say, how much cash do you have compared to what your expend, expense needs are? Um, where the policy gets actually more applicable is not the, uh, rating agencies, unless we developed a policy that said, we need a billion dollars and we have a hundred million, they'll look at that as a mi- management mismatch, which is why there's a prioritization here that, that recognizes that. Um, it's more important actually from a, a legal defense framework on rates. Um, because, for instance, if, uh, we, uh, pass a five percent rate increase and our current policy says, oh, well, we've got a hundred million in excess reserves above our target, there's, there's the, the claim, well, you shouldn't need, if somebody brought us to court, you shouldn't need to have raised rates, why didn't you spend that down? And so the policy says, well, there is a reason to have that hundred million, and this is the reason why it's, it's justified to keep it. And so that's where a lot of this effort comes into play.
Rick, before you, before you, uh, since everybody's made a comment, I, I, I think I feel the same way.
Director Strata, and I'm sorry to interrupt everybody, but if I can just say this, apparently there's an issue with the board members' mics, members on YouTube and Zoom can't hear you, so if we can ask you, what I've been told, the solution for now is, is if you can speak closer to your microphones, because the audio going out is just, it's, it's bad quality. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. So, I just wanted to add that, in general, that, that's kind of my concern also, um, I, I really wanted to get a sense of, uh, whether the proposal to keep or to get to target reserves was somehow, um, only possible through rate increases, and, and, and the big one that kind of stuck out to me was the state water project, which I know we'll, we'll get into that. And, I mean, that, that's, that's a huge, uh, I think we're trying to get to a target that's about maybe- I think we're trying to get to a target that's about maybe twice the size that we have right now. And, and when we get to that one, you know, the, the one thing that I think we want to have as a board of discussion on is really how we got to the recent increase that we just made to the 11 cents. I, I don't remember if, if we did it thinking that we would leave it open to possibly not collect the full 11 cents whenever we got to a specific target, maybe, I don't know if we're there yet. And then I do see something in there as the option of water purchase, which I think I know where you're coming from on that, on the Rosedale stuff. And so when we get to it, I think that's the conversation we're going to have. But, but I am equally concerned about ballooning our reserves with the help of rate increases.
So, so just to get right, right to the concern, and, and it's covered actually for the most part, the first part of the slide. As, as I had kind of started with, the state water project fund is probably the one of our biggest requests for consideration on change, if, if nothing else, and for a few reasons there. The, the, that fund is special. It's tied directly to a tax rate, obviously, and that has its own, its own considerations. What this proposal does is it, it says we need roughly another 40 million more than we have now to get to the target. And we get there through keeping the 11 cents for another few years, based on what, what the projections are. At that point, two things come together. One, we're at the target, and then we can reevaluate honestly if we, if we need to lower that tax rate. But what comes in that timeframe is probably a lot better estimates on major costs coming down our way, both from the Delta Conveyance Project and Site Reservoir. A lot of the trouble that we faced on this are anticipated costs and then delays in these projects, and so they're not quite hitting when we thought that they would hit. But they're major, major costs coming, coming down the way. And so what, ultimately, would it make sense to temporarily lower a rate to then just have to go and increase it when there are very strong reasons for having a higher reserve balance in this fund? And so some of the primary ones for that, of all funds, it is the most volatile on, on expenses for things completely outside of our control and our predictability. We saw that this year, you know, 75% would have been a great year, and then all of a sudden, a week later, two weeks later, it's 100%. These are multi-million dollar expense changes in the course of a couple of weeks. When we pay that money is variable, that depends on MET system and when they, and when they can accept it. And we pay it in the months in which it's delivered to MET. And so let's say last year, we spent most of our variable rate to the state in January through March, and the next year it might be October and November. And the idea is unless you have cash on hand to pay for that, you're inevitably borrowing from other funds to, to cover this. And so how much we pay is a hydrology-based, to the tune of very significant numbers. When we pay it is based on a system that's not ours. How much we pay from the sake of the system itself is completely variable. I mean, they'd like to say that it's fixed, but Orville was a good example of things happen, the state responds, and we end up paying our, our share, and we've practically no, no say in that. It just gets passed on on an invoice that we have to pay very timely. Or other things like there'll be a, a review of whether the amount that was allocated to us is our part of the system, on this segment of the system was really accurate, they'll relook at it and then bill us. And so how much we pay, when we pay are very variable. And so you'll see that the, the, the budget for next year is over $90 million, and we think we'll pay every penny of that. And so if we didn't have reserves there, that, that comes at, at a big risk. A lot of the other agencies that rely on the state water project system have one to two years of their, their full allotment or their full budget in reserve. And so this is, in essence, one year in aggregate. That's what we're saying is we need one full year set aside to, to cover these expenses. And so this year, just as a really good example, that 20 million, which is the current target, is, would, would have been wholly insufficient had we not been at 40 million now, which is what, where we've, we've been at. And so, so of all funds, this, this one, I think, deserves some attention. And it directly impacts the tax rate, which of course, we, we, is under review right now, and we need to be able to justify that. And so that's, that's the one probably we need to focus on.
Have we talked to Matt about timing of the payment? Can they float that for, if it hits at a odd time? I don't know the timing of it, I haven't seen that, but.
I, I do know in years like.
Might be something we need to at least plant that seed.
So MET system is large, and of course, they manage behind a curtain. And we don't know. We've asked a number of times, unfortunately, Robert's not here, Dan's not here. They're very engaged in those discussions. But MET is just not willing to share. They're not willing to commit ahead of time because of all the different options they apparently have in what they do with the water. Do they put it in ground? Do they send it to us? Do they go ahead and take it further down the system? So it is, it's very difficult. And I've had conversations with their chief operating officer saying, recently saying, we need to get a better handle on this because it is causing problems. You know, Rosedale Rio Bravo is not a MET directly, but we rely on MET to move that water to us. The fact that we had great hydrology and they're able to make a delivery, which a year ago, they absolutely were convinced there would be no more water. And so, you know, what we're trying to do is, is to gain the flexibility to manage within the system of unknowns. It's not that we're not paying attention, it's not that we're trying to hedge our bets in a different way, it's, these are driven by real-world conditions.
Right. Yeah, probably a bigger, biggest swing we'll ever see in that fund this year.
But, I mean, when it happens, we need to be able to respond.
Yeah, understood. But we, but we are, though, we were ready to respond, right? It's because we had a couple really low years.
Right.
We, we, we were there. So I mean, we, we did respond. It's not like, you know, you're, you're, you're assuming that, that it's going to be 100% for the next couple of years, then we would be in trouble.
Well, I don't think I said that, but I do think.
Then we would be in trouble.
Yeah.
I mean, what would we do? We'd have to borrow the money.
Well, we'd have to raise the tax rate.
That's correct. Yeah, we'd have to do something quick. Which, which you, which we have the option to do, right?
Well, I think.
To raise the tax rate if we had to.
In all honesty, that's being challenged.
We know. Right, but if the expenses go up, it's a good, a good justification.
Yeah, so the, the end result of the recommendation is you budget, which would be our normal tax rate, on what we consider a more average number, which is, would stay at the 50% allocation that we've been budgeting. But you have enough cash on hand to cover us if we're wrong, and if it's much more, like this year. And so you set a normal tax rate based on normal conditions, but you have enough in reserve to handle the unexpected, because if it does happen, we're on the hook to pay for every, every dime of it. It's, it's not an option unless we want to reject the water, which isn't an option, really. And so the other, the other last risk, which we, we haven't talked about, and then I'll, I'll finish with the state water project, of reserve need is, unlike our other funds, we only get that tax rate. It comes in really in two times per year, January and, and actually today and tomorrow is when we're getting it in. That money has to hold us through at most six months. And so there's no other income streams other than our investments in there. And so that, tying back to the idea of when we make our payments, we have huge amounts that we pay in June, and then when it's delivered, so we need to have enough cash on hand, which is part of the target, to cover six months in order to get to the next major tranche. Our other funds get monies regularly, either monthly or what have you, with the exception of sanitation, which also gets its, its sanitation in stormwater, its major funds through the tax system as well. So that, that's all built into the recommendation. Lastly, just to cover on, on some of the, the sense of a, a need for an update in the reserve policy, we have what is the most critical reserve, the working capital, currently based on 90 days of operating expenses, which is, which is fine, it's well-aligned with industry norms. The trouble is, is our CIP program is so large, it's, it's 40 to 50% typically of what our operating expenses are. And our CIP is heavily debt and grant funded, and grants can take months, if not a year sometimes, to get the funding for. So the, the recognition that that 90 days should be based both on operating expenses and our CIP, because that's what we're really paying out on, on our accounts payable and, and salaries. So that's the other major update to the thinking in the reserve policy. And then with that, I'll move forward. There we go. The policy itself, not the reserves, there were a few major considerations in trying to come up with something to present to you all. One, we talked about that this, although there's a technical component to this, this inherently should reflect the risk tolerance of the board. I mean, that's, that's what we're managing against, our, our risks, whether earthquakes or system failures or, or things along these lines. As we've talked about, it's the most important policy from justifying our rates. And so if we're ever challenged in court, this policy comes directly into play. And so if it's not in the policy, it's like it doesn't exist, so, which is why we're trying to cover our bases in the policy. You'll see in the industry recommendations, whether that's AWWA or the Government Finance Officers Association or other ones, best practices presented, that the, the kind of interesting thing with this one is although there's best practices, if you actually survey agencies, it's not very specific. It's, it's, it all comes down to realize the risk for your agency and adapt accordingly. And so we need something that reflects CBWD's needs. And then lastly, and these are just practical points, as someone that has to implement this kind of a policy, is you want it to be flexible. The more we have static numbers in there, the, the harder it is to, to really have and reflect ongoing changing needs. And at the same time, as stable as possible. So for instance, if we have our policy based on the CIP, well, in this current five-year CIP, we've got multiple very large projects, for instance, in stormwater that are not normal. So that might unnecessarily drive up a long-term reserve target. It's better to have something that's based on a more stable number that you can plan around to actually say, do we, do we have enough or do we have too much? And then lastly, there's staff on the other end of this that have to take this and implement it. And so the, the easier to understand, the better and straightforward, and, and for communicating to the community and those that, that are going to review this. Okay. Okay. So two things covered in the proposed changes. One is updating the targets, we already talked about that, based on risks. Some of them add new targets, dealing with very specific risks. And then lastly, which is a new concept, I actually haven't seen this anywhere else other than last agency I, I proposed this at, but it worked out really well, is the idea of prioritizing these reserves. And, and this comes from an inherent question that, that gets asked all the time from boards, and it's very tricky to answer, which is, how much do we have available to lower rates in what you're asking me we need to, to lower rates on? And you normally look to your rate stabilization fund. Well, if you are under your reserve targets, how much is in the rate stabilization fund? And the, the thinking is practically, these are prioritized. You shouldn't have 50% of your most critical reserve to pay bills and then also say that we have extra in rate stabilization. They, they fill in buckets, so to speak. And so it's a policy that tries to reflect the practical reality that some of these are more important than the others. There we go. So getting into this idea of prioritization, if we went forward with this kind of thought, you break down your reserves into three major categories. One in the red is, is not that it's bad, it's that it's very good, it's just critical. And so we call the, the liquidity type of reserves. There's really just a couple major ones in this one. But this isn't about dealing with the unanticipated, it's about having enough cash on hand to pay bills. And so there, there is an inherent reality to the financial functioning of a district that we pay things at a different time than we get money in. We just talked about the idea that we get taxes in twice a year, but we're paying all year long. On the domestic fund or the canal fund, there's water demands in different part, times of the year based on, on heat and planting season and these kinds of things. And that doesn't have anything to do with when we need to pay funds, where sometimes we pay everything upfront, prepaid expenses, memberships, these kinds of things. So we need enough on hand to cover our expenses. This would be the one that I would beg and plead to make sure that we had enough at least to cover, cover this. And so two types of reserves in there, the working capital and then a debt service reserve, which is equivalent to enough on hand to pay one year's worth of debt service for that fund. The other one, which is usually, and we call these the stabilization reserves, or if we're talking about where are we compared to our target, this would be sort of the, the minimum level we would look at for a target. And there are more typical kinds of things that, that we review for reserves. So capital replacement, rate stabilization, your bread and butter reserves. We have a new one that I'm calling in here, which is a reserve set aside for mandatory water purchases. This is the state water project primarily, where if we budget at 50% and we get 100% allocation here, you want the other 50% on hand to pay for the water that we have to buy. And so these are important, but there's a lot of flexibility in the level for these, and, and they're there to pay for unanticipated expenses. So they're there to spend, but you don't want to keep them low because there may be more anticipated expenses coming. So you want to build them back up over time. And then last are what is more aspirational in nature, the contingency funds. These cover things that we know may happen, but they don't happen very often, or if they do happen, the, the risks aren't necessarily as impactful. So things like, on, for instance, the Rosedale contract, we have, if it's available, an option to buy additional water. That may be handy and desirable to do, but if we don't have cash on hand to do that, you're raising rates to do it, to cover that expense. So if we have it on hand, it's good to have on hand to buy the water. Emergency reserve is probably the primary one here, covering major expenses in the case of emergencies. This one, although it sounds really important, you have more options with emergencies. For instance, we may get FEMA funding, we may be able to go out and get loans, these kinds of things. So you're not trying to deal with the full scope of the emergency, you're trying to give yourself some time to deal with it primarily. And so it's risk-based, based on the, the nature of the fund. And then lastly, and this is just a set aside, some, some of these funds have major CIP planned, especially after the five-year. You look at stormwater or canal, canal aging system, if you look at the CIP there, it's, they're really large projects, same with stormwater. So if you have, so to speak, excess cash on hand, it's handy to hold on to it till we get to the next five-year CIP and use that to offset the amount of debt. So you would spend it, offset the amount of debt you would otherwise be taking out. So the, what do these categories mean with practical action? The, the way the, the policy would work is depending on the category, you would do different things because they are more or less important. Two, two sort of administrative items. One is you all should know where we're at, and so at least annually getting a report on this, the budget would probably typically cover this. And the other one is if we're below any of these targets, at least a plan for consideration, it doesn't bind anyone's hands, but how we could get there within the, the timeframe. And so liquidity, the idea is if we're below this target, which means we'd have no contingency funds, no stabilization funds, and we would be below the liquidity funds, which would be a bare minimum amount of cash, you'll probably have me coming to you saying, we need to do something pretty, pretty significant to at least get to that level. You're going to do all your typical things, which is if you happen to have savings, extra revenues or an expense that doesn't hit, you'll hold on to those, but you'll probably strongly consider rate increases for this fund. The, the yellow one, and that would be in, sorry, and that would be in like a one to five-year time period, typically probably one to two years. On the stabilization side, it's, it's a longer time horizon. As I said, you would use these, these funds for unanticipated things. Let's say we have to do a major rate increase and you want to smooth it out over four years, so we're spending down our rate stabilization to do that. Once we're there, though, we should build that up for the next, the next time that comes around. And so you give yourselves up to 10 years and mostly relying on savings to set aside so that we don't have to raise rates. If that's not enough, then you would get a plan to consider for raising rates. And then lastly, the more aspirational side, you're probably not going to raise rates for those. You'd hold on to savings if you, if, if we thought it appropriate, and you give yourselves up to 20 years to, to build those up as part of the overall timeframe. So I'll, I'll try and cover these ones quickly and get on to the state water project because we've covered a lot of this material upfront. These are the different categories, we'll go through each one. Working capital reserves, as I said, there's a mismatch between revenues and expenses, so we need money to pay bills. Currently, we're at 90 days of the operating budget. The change would be to 90 days of operating budget and the CIP budget for the, the reasons we talked about, that overpaying large sums for CIP projects. And the timing of those really large payments is variable depending on the progress of the project, so that, that can be hard to, to nail down in a. So that, that can be hard to, to nail down in advance. Debt service would be the other major fund here. Currently, our policy only really talks about this if it's required. So if we've signed a contract, let's say for the state for SRF money, then the policy says, well, we should do what we signed the contract for. There's proposed to be a more general target here, which says, whether it's explicitly required or not, it's handy to have a year's worth of debt service on hand above what you're paying for your normal bills. And so that's what this, this would implement. Most of the time, we've already set that aside, so it's not necessarily a new requirement. Rate stabilization is, is your primary bread and butter fund to cover things in your budget that you haven't anticipated. Case in point, things like the turf rebates, right? We've gone over, there's reasons to go over. We didn't budget for that. It has to come from somewhere. It comes from here in, in all practical respects. And so our current target is 10% of, of current rate revenues. There's some caveats on that depending on which, which fund it is. And so the, the major change is still keep it at 10%, but the only fund that we would exclude is the stormwater fund because it's getting all of its funds from the tax and the, the expenses are really stable. And we set a specific target for the workers' comp fund of, of a million dollars, which is about what we have in there now. So it's just keeping what we have. The mandatory water purchase is one that we don't specifically have in our current policy, but this is again, that we budget at a certain percentage, we need enough on hand to cover up to the maximum contract obligation that we have. So if we budget at 50% allocation, we budget another 50% to get to your 100%. And so that's what you base it on. Our current policy has that set $20 million. That functions like what I'm talking about here. And so the new target would be based on, on that maximum contract obligation. The other source of water on this would be the Rosedale real Bravo water, that 9,500 acre feet. So that's in the West replenishment fund. We're, we're probably going to be budgeting at zero going forward, so you'd want to have the full 9,500 set aside in expense to cover that when it, when it happens. The, the other option is you build it into the budget, which then builds it into the rate requirement. And then capital replacement is probably the most primary one that's proposed to change, and this is what we've already talked about. And so this fund is there for a number of reasons, but it's, it's there if the system fails, an unanticipated replacement need, if all of a sudden we think that we need to move projects forward, so we didn't plan on spending it next year, but let's say there's a mainline replacement project we're planning four years from now and it makes sense to do it as a package, we'd want to move that forward. So this would cover things like that. And then largely, if we get a bid comes in, that's way more than we thought, but we still need to move forward with it, this covers expenses like that. So broad range of, of coverage. The current targets, as I mentioned, are either based on the old value of the system, a depreciated value of the system or, or the CIP. And this would change to a, a set one year out of 75-year assumed life of the replacement value of the system. So it's like 1% of the replacement value of the system that this would be based on. Emergency would switch to the same line of thinking. So this is there to get us started to respond to, to emergencies, knowing that some of the most costly emergencies like earthquakes or other things that might damage underground facilities are not covered by insurance. They may be covered by FEMA, but if they are covered by FEMA, it could be two to 10 years before you get repayment on that. So you need cash to cover it. And so instead of the current targets, we'd be switching to something similar to the capital replacement, but a, a percentage of the cap, the, the full capital replacement value based on the risk of the fund. And then the last two are, are, go in that aspirational sort of category. The one I've already covered, which is optional water purchase. So we have an option to buy additional Rosedale water sometimes, this 7,000 acre feet, so it's set aside an amount to cover that if we wanted to. And then on major CIP, this is the idea, canal, stormwater, we have huge projects in the future. So if we have funds today, it makes sense to hold on to them to help offset debt for the future. So when they come around, we would spend them. This gets into the specific factors for each one of the funds as a reference slide. This one I thought would be of interest based, actually a lot on, on board commentary, which is where have we been and where are we projected to go with reserve balances? So the caveat here is this doesn't include the state water project fund, which can be significant. It was excluded, one, because at the beginning of this period, it was disbanded, so it throws off the numbers. Two, it's restricted, you can't use it for any other thing anyways. And so to, to get to the core of our normal unrestricted funding, the, the key here is that, is six years ago, in FY '17, we were at our, our more recent peak of over 450 million. We've drawn that down this year, essentially 100 million. So we have drawn the reserves down to get to about 350. And the goal with everything that I've presented to you, which is the future years there in the blue chart, is to say, keep it steady. And as a percentage of the operating budget, which is the orange line, it actually goes down because our operating budget is expected to keep going up. So even keeping it steady is, is negative territory from a, a relative position.
You know, I have a, I don't know, a little skepticism on this chart. It seems like we've pulled more into the restricted category where, I mean, if, if our unrestricted reserves in 2016, 2017 were 400, over $450 million, which is what at least that 2017 bar shows, we didn't have another $200 million of restricted reserves then. And yet now we have two, over $200 million in restricted reserves. Have, I mean, have we, you weren't here then, obviously. Have we been shifting this number to make the restricted part a bigger component of the overall reserves?
Well, the, so when we talk about restricted, and this is an important distinction, restricted is something that's outside of our control. Otherwise, it would just be designated or assigned. So these are things either by law or by contract that we've agreed to, that you have somebody external to us that can enforce a position. So their money's for a specific purpose. Most specifically for us, this relates to the state water project fund. So by law, we can only spend that on state water project expenses. Our, at least what I call the capacity fees, the development charges, that can be, Carrie can help me. I know that now it's over 50 million in total, so that makes up a significant amount. And those get spent down on projects as they, as they happen.
Yeah, I mean, those are 75 million as of the end of April.
Right.
Together, the two.
And then depending on the timing, if we've drawn down on, on, let's say we, we issue bonds, we issue $100 million in bonds, that's going to show up as, as restricted funds. It's, it's cash, but it's restricted funds. You can only spend it on those, those projects. So if we set aside an amount for that service.
Right. So for instance, as of the end of April, domestic note series 2022, 35 million.
Right. So they, they make up big numbers and they're all planned in the spending, but yes. So pretty comfortable that this is the real unrestricted balances and there's no shifting between them.
Well, I think it is as of today. I just wonder about this big drop we're showing from a few years ago. I think there might've been some reclassification or something going on. We, we just, I mean, we didn't have that much of restricted reserves back then, as we do now. Not, not sure why.
Rick, I have another question back on the prior slide. So these, these reserve assumptions that you're, that, that are delineated in the top two rows, are those new?
So.
Are these recommended?
So like the, the first line, which is working capital, operating, that's the, well, mostly that's the same. We've had a 90-day standard. What's proposed to change is for stormwater and state water project, it shouldn't be 90 days, it should be 180 days or six months because we have to wait six months. We, we only get money twice a year. So your cash needs to last longer and making a payments. And so that's, that's really important for those funds because the inflow of cash is so limited. The new one would be 90 days or 180 days of capital project budget. So that's the second line. That wasn't in our current policy. And like rate stabilization, we said 10% before. This makes it a little bit more broad and straightforward. There were some carve-outs before and we were saying it's, should be 10% for, for most funds. So some of this is reflective of the, of the existing policy, some of it's new.
Yeah. Can I just say one thing? I think that, and I mentioned this earlier to my colleagues here, but we, and I know you're new. So we had, you know, we have a finance committee. And I, I think, I'm just kind of putting this out there. I think if we had had the benefit of having this conversation at the finance committee, I know we've had problems scheduling some meetings, this, this might've sort of helped this conversation move along. And maybe next time we're considering a major discussion around reserves or similar issues that, that come to us first.
Definitely appreciate that comment. The, the one that drove the timing was probably the state water project one given, and the other one seemed, seemed appropriate to bring along with, but definitely understand that that committee is very useful, especially in comprehensive changes.
Good point. On this slide, I think it's slide 16, can you produce that slide with dollar numbers on it instead of just this? Can you have a?
So in, in the attachment, there is.
I've, I've seen a lot of bits and pieces, but is there one that has it all in one place?
So, so I forget which attachment that is, but it, it goes through the actual numbers for each of these categories, for each of the funds, both what the target is and how much money would be in them. David, which?
Attachment one.
Attachment one. So, so that goes through the numbers. And then the, when we get into each fund, you'll, you'll see that visually on the, on the bar charts.
I know. I want to see it all together though. Like you've got everything together here, why can't we see all the numbers together?
About 75 million is the difference between what it is, a little bit more.
I can, I can bring that back.
Is the, is the increase? Yeah. See if I can see it here. First, I see what you're saying.
You got it?
Did, Rick, did you have in your mind a schedule of when you wanted us to adopt some of these changes or is this just presentation? And the reason I say that is it, it does feel to me like it's, it's a lot. I know that maybe the driver was the state water project, but maybe that's the one we should focus on. And the rest, we should not try to rush it. It, it just seemed like big, big changes.
Yeah, the, the idea as we were developing it was talk about the framework and the idea, ideally in the study session last week. And then depending on the feedback, you'd get a, a red line policy for review that actually showed what, what that is in language, get last changes there. So that would've been beginning of June. And then looked at final adoption by the end of June when we're looking at the state project tax. And so recognizing there is a priority even to the changes, if we wanted to focus on just the state water project fund, we can, we can do that as well.
Did you want this at all or do you want to go back to your?
If you could just zoom in.
To what page? This page?
That's, that's as good one as any. Yeah. So the, this one is probably the, the largest change and, and most significant one. And, and so you have at the very bottom, total assigned reserves, which adds up everything above it. Currently, we're at 20 million. Our new recommended policy would bring us up to 77. So we'd, we'd be saying we need another 40 or we need the, the difference between the 46 that we're at now and the 77. And we'd get there through keeping our rate the same over the next three years. But here you have the specific numbers in each category, both currently, what they're proposed to be and what actual cash we have now. And that's the far right column.
Yeah, I, I had trouble with some of these labels. So, I mean, like that last line, total budgets reserves, what does that mean? They're all, all the numbers are the same. I don't get it.
And so, yeah, the, the probably most important line is total assigned reserves. That's the target regardless of how much we actually have, how much we think we should have. The 46 on the far right is how much money is projected being there at the end, end of the year or at the end of '24. So you have 77 million being what the target would be, 46 is what we actually think we'll have at the end of the year. So when you prioritize where that falls under these categories, it would all go under the, the working capital. So, so one's target, one's actual cash and where, which categories it goes to.
Okay. So the current target is the first column and then the third column is what we actually have.
Mm-hmm.
And you prioritize that into where you think it would best fit under the new proposed target regime.
Right.
Yeah, okay. All right. And so the red, on the middle column, the red, yellow and green add up to 77.4?
Yes.
Yeah, I had trouble figuring out what you meant by some of this.
The current target, 2024, is that, what is that? Is that, how come?
So the current policy just says a flat 20 million. The intent of that was to cover in, on a, like changes in the hydrology. The, so that's, that's the current target, 20 million. We will have 46. So if there's no change to the policy, it would look like we have an excess 26 million. And the, the point of all of this is to say, when you look at the risks to the fund and how it operates, there's ample justification for having much more. So to, to, to reflect that we have excess when we're trying to set tax rates is what we're.
So instead of having an excess 26, we have a, we have a deficient 31.
Yes.
All right. And so the plan would be keeping the tax rate the same over the next few years to let that grow till we get to that new target and then reevaluate it from there.
Yeah. That's fine with me. That makes sense. Now that I understand this page, that makes sense.
And there's a page for each of the funds.
Right.
Where we, what's the, since I don't, I know there's bits and pieces everywhere, but the, the total cost of the, of the Rosedale purchase, you said it was like 16,000 acre feet?
So the.
9,500, what was it?
Yeah. So the 9,500 is the mandatory take or pay amount. And I think that comes out to 8 million and change to cover all the costs for that.
So if we go back, stormwater was the other one that you said you had a big, so, so essentially we have a, if you go up, go up one to stormwater.
All right. I'm not in control of it now.
Just go back up one page.
Yolanda, can you go up one page, please?
Go to page one.
Page one.
There you go.
She just needs.
Thank you. So, so this one, we have a pretty large unassigned reserve right now, right? It's more than double the target. So what you're suggesting there is by taking into account some other things like the, the CIP, I guess, that change the target from 50 to 85.
Yes.
That's what you're suggesting. And then we still have excess reserves. What do you, what do you say we should do with those?
So, so this one has a caveat to it. There's, there's, I guess, two primary things going on with the stormwater fund that make it very special, as we've talked about. So that fund is limited to the tax that comes in. We don't set that rate, we're beholden to whatever we happen to get. The CIP relating to that fund is enormous. And so, so the system is large, the future needs are large, and we have a very limited amount that's coming in. And so you literally have to save up over a long period of time and then, and then do CIP.
Okay.
So, so that's what this is reflecting. The, the unassigned is not really unassigned. WFI, when we went through the financing for that project, had a requirement in the contract which said that they wanted 20 million set aside, but not formally, as part of another target. So it's an unofficial target. So you'll see at least 20 million always in the unassigned category. Otherwise, we have to send them a notice of default from that condition.
But now that we're increasing our target, can't we just say it's in there now?
No, because then that's, they wanted 20 million over whatever target we happened to say. So it's, it's a weird condition.
It sounds like we're putting ourselves in a box by increasing the target then.
Yes.
Because now we're making it more difficult for ourselves to have an extra 20.
Well, it looks like we have an extra 20.
Yeah, we, we, we looked at it and I think we can manage that. If worse came to worse, you revise the policy again and, and there's, there's reasons to do that.
Really, the only way we're going to spend the stormwater funds is through additional debt because the income we get on an annual basis is what we can use to leverage a larger loan, right? Because.
Because we're fixed in the amount of money we get each year. So what you try and do is, is go find a project and find a loan that fits within that annual revenue.
I know. So you have all this debt, and then you have all these reserves.
So we're going to burn a portion of the fund down for the project, reduce the size of the loan. But as soon as we do that, we reduce our capacity for a future. I mean, it's, it's very complicated, and we haven't really.
I mean, you're essentially, you're essentially saying that, that our loan covenant prevents us from spending that twenty million dollar cushion.
Yes, but in, in that, so you'll see in the new target thirty point seven five million under major CIP project. So this is, this is one of those that recognizes that in the next five-year CIP, we have large projects. And so this is an amount set aside for intentional future spending to reduce, uh, reduce the debt amount. It's just recognizing that we have cash now, we're going to need it for future projects, we're holding on to it for future projects.
But you're not going to be able to spend it as long as that lo- loan is outstanding.
We can't spend that twenty.
We can't spend the twenty, we can spend the thirty.
Well, why not keep the target at fifty, and, and then you got the twenty on top of that gets you to seventy? Or, or maybe go to, I mean, if you really need to get to eighty-five, go to sixty-five, and then you got the twenty gets you to eighty-five. It's like this phantom reserve you're not allowed to touch.
The, yeah, the, the twenty is, yes.
Doesn't that make more sense? Why not go to sixty-five, and then you have the twenty that you can't spend that gets you to eighty-five? Instead of going to eighty-five, and then you're stuck at, you're essentially at a hundred and five, because you can't spend the twenty.
Are you worried that someone's going to challenge this?
There's a possibility that they're all challengeable. And so thi- this one is just trying to reflect the needs of the system. We created this new category, major CIP, recognizing that there are a couple of funds, Canal is the other one, where we know we need to spend this money, we just don't need to spend it yet. And so we're holding on to it, recognizing it's a down payment for future debt. And so that's what it's there for, it's to hold on to for a few years until we get to the next round of major projects, and then it'll likely get spent. As we're saving up, trying to save up any excess from the remainder of the tax revenue to help, help pay for that going forward, too. Trouble with this fund is it's, especially when, if you remember in our budget presentation, we're anticipating doing another debt issuance in a couple of years, essentially a hundred million. A third of that is for this, this fund as well. So, and that's just to fund this year's, or this five years' CIP projects. So we're, we're pretty much tapped out on this fund, otherwise.
Well. We tapped out with a, with a hundred and thirteen million dollars in the bank. Just doesn't seem right.
Well, we have got two billion dollars worth of projects identified.
Yeah, but you're not going to be able to spend these things. I mean, where's the plan? This is what I was trying to say earlier, where's the plan to spend it? Well, we can't spend it because our loan won't last. So you got a hundred and five million dollars you can't touch.
Well, the, the thirty million would, would be spent, that's the intention. So that targets there to temporarily hold on to it, unlike the other reserves, which are more permanent targets.
Major CIP, PEGO?
So the eighty-five will reduce down to?
Fifty-ish.
Fifty-ish. So they're, so they'll be okay with you just having twenty over the fifty?
Right. Yeah, because once we get to that target.
All right, that makes sense.
Yeah. Do we want to get back to the main presentation?
Sure, sure.
There we go. She, she'll take you back to it right now.
Okay.
And just start.
I turned it off.
I think you're on slide seventeen. Can you take us to slide seventeen?
I can forward through.
I was trying to put it closer so they can hear you.
So each of these, and I'll try and be very brief, goes over visually what, where we are now, that's the current target. The, let's say, for instance, this is the State Water Project Fund. The yellow part is what is the target now. The remaining part is amounts in excess of that target. The dotted line gets you to what the current balance is. So in this case, we have, I think it was about forty, forty-five million, forty-six million projected at the end of FY twenty-four. We say we only need in our current policy twenty, the new proposed target brings that up to roughly eighty, broken down by the categories that we've talked about. Most of this just being working capital, that six months in order to cover the expenses. And so this shows you where we are versus where we think we need to be. This one's one of the more dramatic increases, and that's the State Water Project, what we've been talking about. So domestic water, in the end, again, on the left, we've got a target which is a little over forty million. We're right at about sixty, so we have what's considered excess of target or unassigned reserve. The new policy recognizes, well, the system's large, we have large capital replacement needs. And so when you factor that in with the emergency fund, we would say, well, it's not really excess. We would have justification for going up to a little less than ninety. The plan would just keep this steady, though. So the target's there to justify the, what we have now.
Rick, what's, what's the, in a nutshell, the difference between working capital OPEX and working capital CIP? And, and why? Aren't they both a function of the rate revenue? Or is, or is the revenue for CIP not the same as OPEX?
So, so the two different working capitals are essentially ninety days or twenty-five percent of, uh, of the budget. So you have twenty-five percent of the operating budget, or three months, and then three months of the CIP budget, recognizing that there's that imbalance between when we get money in and when we have to pay it. So that's just there to make sure we have enough cash on hand to pay the bills. Rate stabilization is there if what we budgeted is different than, what actually happens is different than what we budgeted. Either we have less revenues, conservation, or various expenses, chemicals, what have you, that happen.
The CIP right there, the, the working capital CIP, that, that's not funded through rates? Is that, is that, is that the impact fees, or is, what, what's the source of that?
Oh, so, so it depends on the CIP project. So this just reflects the entire CIP, so that's grant-funded, development fee-funded, PEGO-funded. It's, it's the recognition that no matter how it's funded, we have to front the cash to pay the contractors. And sometimes it takes months to get repaid, let's say through a grant. And so you need to have enough cash on hand, three months worth or twenty-five percent, just to front the money.
We don't, we don't bake the, we don't bake the funding needs in the, in the rate structure in order to have that, that, that cash flow for CIP?
Not for the full CIP. We only bake into the rate structure the PEGO part of the CIP. If it's grant-funded, we're assuming it's fully covered, but the reality is you front the cost.
Okay, thank you.
So sanitation is a very similar story, and this, this goes hand in hand with the idea that it's a large costly system. And so when you factor in replacement value, that becomes much more significant compared to where, where we're reflecting that in the, in the current target. And so it's very similar to, to domestic in that regard. Canal is similar to the other two with the one caveat that we have growing debt service in that fund through the Bureau contracts, so there, the, the target there gets a little bit larger. And then just like Stormwater, there is an amount looking forward to the future CIP under the major CIP project at the top. I think we have fifteen million set aside. That's there for future spending. So that would pay for the next set of major replacement, things like laterals and what have you. So that's, that, that would go down. There we go. Stormwater, we just talked about. And so this is recognizing the idea that we need to set aside funding for future CIP. You see that there. Everything else is similar. For West and East replenishment, the only difference here that's, that's significant is one, for West is that optional set aside for, for, for the Rosedale water, that extra seven thousand acre feet, if we ever wanted to take advantage of that. The other is for West and East, it's recognizing the, the risk factors on the emergency. So here, we have two point five percent of the replacement value set aside for emergencies. And that's because for the replenishment funds, unlike, say, domestic fund, we have wells scattered throughout the whole service area. So if an earthquake happens, and the system is spread throughout the whole service area, although there's significant risks, it's a distributed risk across the whole system. West, we've got a few major facilities. The, the Whitewater, you've got here the replenishment, or at the Palm Desert facility, and, and then you've got the Levy facility on the, the east side. So you have a few very major facilities, Mid Valley Pipeline. And so if anything were to happen to either of those as a proportion to the total assets, it's, it would be costly to try and replace in the case of an earthquake or major flooding. So it just reflects a little bit of higher risk to, to these funds than like domestic sanitation canal, which are pretty distributed. East is the same, same thing. Mission Creek is the, the only other one, it's a very small fund. And so here, we're, we're setting an emergency reserve of a hundred percent. The very simple reason is it's got one facility that, that makes up the entire, the entire fund. There's a very small rate base on this, so if anything really happened to that facility, instead of dramatically increasing rates on those, those pumpers, recognizing the fact that we do have a high reserve total right now, you just set aside enough to replace the facility. The rest would be unassigned, and we would actively draw those down over time as expenses through inflation increase, we would just cover that. So we would pro- uh, uh, project, you know, very stable rates in the future as this reserve balance gets drawn down. Motor Pool, setting aside a specific million dollars, this is generally to cover a very, a large piece of equipment, caterpillar or something else, that we weren't anticipating on replacing, and if it failed, and we felt it couldn't wait. You have enough funds on hand to cover that and move forward. It largely recognizes that we have about that much in there now. Workers' comp is similar, we have about a million in there now. We haven't set a specific target for this, but we cover the expenses that hit, the claims that hit. And if there are large ones, we have up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollar self-insurance. So a few large ones, and, and it doesn't take much to be a large claim on workers' comp, we would drain that cash really easily. So it's important to at least set it aside should that happen. So that's reserves. And I'll, I'll stop here for, for direction at this point.
You probably heard it pretty well already. So, so it seems like a lot of this exercise is, is not necessarily going to drive rates.
Correct.
It's more a justification of our unassigned reserves.
Yes.
So I think you've made a really good case for our unassigned reserves, this presentation, it's a public document. Personally, I'm not, I mean, I'd be okay with changing the State Water Project One in an official motion by the board or whatever, but I really am not comfortable with those other ones. I, I just get the sense that we might regret this if we, if we change our, our policy on all these different funds for the reserves, and then our lenders look at that, and they say, well, you know, you can't go down. I'd rather stay where we are. I'm not opposed to having unassigned reserves, we have them. I mean, we, I think this board has proven that we're not opposed to that, to building those unassigned reserves. And maybe we do need them based on your justification. But having a policy that prescribes them, it's just, I think it just leads to more, more. Like, now we're going to do more, and then we're going to need to do more again later, and it's too much. That's my feeling on it. So I would, I'd be okay with official action on the State Water Project, because I think maybe we need extra justification for that tax.
So to Rick's point, that would be making an adjustment red line to the policy and bringing that back to the board.
On that particular part of the policy. Now, I don't know how everyone else feels, but that's where I am. I just feel like we're putting ourselves in a box on all those other reserves. And, and, and you, and at some point, you're going to have to trust the board to be responsible with, which I think we are. I think we've proven that. A lot of it's because the budgeting is conservative, and we end up over collecting.
I, I, I agree. I, I think that we do have a need to do something with the State Water Project Tax, and what I would recommend is that prior to bringing that before the board, that, that we, if we needed to have a little bit more discussion in closed session about what that means and what that does. In particular, I have some questions on the Rosedale stuff. I know that we've had, I don't know, this memo now is probably like the fourth opinion. So I do need time, and I think it might be good for us to kind of revisit those other memos, to try to think about why things were being done in a specific way, what the limitations are now. There's a lot of history there, not just on the State Water Project Tax, how the funding has been used historically, but also the conversations we had about why we increased last time we increased it. And so before we bring it to the board, I'd, I'd like to hash that stuff out. If we need to do it in closed session, then I leave that up to the general manager to figure that out. Otherwise, I, I just don't want to be in a position to get into that when you actually bring it to us, and then it's, hey, we can't talk about it.
I agree with their sa- I mean, I agree with John saying, and Vice President Castllo, I mean, we were caught where we had to raise rates because we had to increase our reserves. And that was the reason why we went back and redid some of the policies. So I just think that we're kind of going to go back to the same, the same thing. So I, I, I understand the State Water Projects is a little different, we're a little upside down when we take years like this. Maybe next year, we will have another big year, so, and we need to be prepared for that. So I think that's, 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 that's what we're talking about.
Great presentation, Rick, thank you. I, I agree, and I just, I would just say again, that if we have a chance in the future to have perhaps more dialogue with the finance committee about some of the other recommendations, that I'm not opposed to further consideration, but just not at this moment.
And if I could just summarize again, I think one of the points Rick tried to make, this policy change is not intended to be a rate driver. It is intended to recognize the different categories that staff and the board would have to respond to, which is just identifying them, and then working through each budget year. And then if there are funds left over, for whatever reason, there is a justification to keep those, because there's a need identified for those moving forward. We're just trying to be prudent in recognizing there is a huge risk out there to our rate payers if there were a contingency. We can't just walk in, sign some papers, and walk out with a handful of cash. It takes us at least forty-five days to do a rate increase because of the requirement to do a public hearing. What do we do in those forty-five days if there's a service interruption? I mean, all we can, I mean, all we've got is the money we have in hand.
We have a revolving line of credit, is that available?
I guess that is available through the Bank of the West for up to twenty-five million. I don't know how much of that is encumbered at this point.
But Jim, in, in an emergency, you can use any of the money, from any of the funds in an emergency, right?
So then what that does is it create, so if we were to have an earthquake, we could potentially lose service and sanitation, domestic and canal, all three of them.
And you would use all the cash that we have, and that's why we have so many days of cash on hand.
Right.
You're not going to fix that problem overnight anyways.
No.
Spending the amount of money to solve that problem is going to take years.
But if we don't have the money, we can't even start. I mean, it become, it then would become a prioritization of where do we go first? Where's the greatest need?
Well, you can go buy a new canal for five hundred million dollars.
Well, it probably wouldn't be canal.
It would be something.
It would be probably domestic or sanitation. You know, it doesn't make sense to fix domestic if you don't have a way to collect the used water. You can supplement domestic with other, by other means. So, I mean, it's just, having gone through a number of contingencies in a previous life, these events are real, and the disruption to our cus- the customers are not going to be very patient ultimately. They'll be understanding at the beginning, but then ultimately, they'll want things to return to normal. return to normal as quickly as possible. And all we're trying to do is to protect.
But don't make it sound like there's a major problem here at CBWD and we don't have enough cash, okay? We have a half a billion dollars in the bank. So, I mean, come on.
Well, we actually don't have.
This is, you know.
You have to take the restricted out.
No, I understand that. So you have 300 and something, 350.
Right.
You can solve a lot of problems with 350. I mean, you've been in these contingency situations, you don't spend it all at once anyways, you know? You don't, there's nothing off the shelf that you can go buy to solve some of these problems. It's going to take years of.
Well, hopefully there's not going to be customers out there that are without water or sanitation service for years.
Well, it depends. Depends on what happens.
Agreed.
You can't dig up every pipe in one day. It's going to take a long time.
No, but there are in-house forces, there's contract forces, there's going to be a whole lot of people that are going to be looking to help and then there won't be. Because there's only so much work, there's only so much labor force out there. And then it's going to get expensive, just like it did with turf rebates. You know, we started out with a price on turf rebates, then everybody wanted, then we had the drought and the price tripled. People were paying $12, more than $16 a square foot. Anyway, so I think, I appreciate the work that Rick has put in here. I do think it's good to think about these things.
And honestly, I think this helps justify what we're doing. Whether we adopt all the changes or not, it's part of the record that shows the need for these, what we are calling unassigned reserves.
Yeah, there's definitely.
We do have significant unassigned reserves and I don't think we're taking action that necessarily is going to make those go away. In the budget, it might look, it might look like they're going away. Trust me, they're going to see, they'll still be here.
That's where the reserve policy, which we just discussed, and the budget and rates, they're related, but they are separate. So the rates keep our reserves, if adopted, keep our reserves where they're at as a balance. The target justifies keeping, you know, the idea of why we're keeping that balance as it is. And so if the rates are adopted, we stay steady, that's the idea. There's only a few more slides just to cover some major assumptions on the State Water Project side, since we didn't cover that specifically. So what you have is, in this next year's budget for State Water Project Fund, a tremendous amount being spent for a very good purpose, which is to get the 100% Table A allocation, but it's roughly $29 million just in variable transportation costs to move it down the project. There is a sort of three caveats here on the assumption. So we're taking into consideration, it's 100% allocation for this calendar year. We're assuming 50% for next year, but the one which is new in how we're budgeting, and this is in an attempt to be more accurate, is although those are the baseline assumptions, there is an additional assumption, which is when is Met going to actually be able to take the water, which is when we're charged for it. And so what is in the budget reflects delivery schedules from Met. And so some of this water is assumed to be delivered in future periods. They'll have to store it and so we'll pay for it then in the budget, is the idea. So although I'm saying 100% allocation, a 50% allocation, the numbers don't directly tie to that because this is based on delivery schedules. We have the latest numbers from DWR on the transportation rate, which is one of the biggest drivers here, so that's included in this number. There is a new type of cost, at least as far as recent history, that will, is included in the budget, it's a little over $3 million. And so in our agreements with Metropolitan, if the Table A is over 50%, this condition's triggered where we pay a share of their storage costs. So this is them diverting into banking systems up in the Central Valley and what have you to hold on to the water so that we can deliver it next year, taking into consideration conveyance limitations and the State Water Project and other things. So we agreed to share in some of those costs. So that's included in the budget. Obviously, the Yuba program's a dry year program, that doesn't apply to this year, so that's at zero for the next fiscal year. A new one, and it's important to get direction on this now, you got the legal memo in advance, we historically have covered the full cost of the Rosedale Rio Bravo water in the West Rack. So in total, that's over $8 million for this next year. There is a proposal to pay for the portion of that, which is our direct invoice from DWR on the transportation costs, to pay for that out of the State Water Project Fund. Few major reasons for that. One, it is a direct invoice from DWR and it's by virtue of our contract. And it is consistent with our existing treatment of Met's 35,000 acre feet, where we pay their share of the cost on the State Water Project for the exact same reason. So we would be consistent with that. And it's defensible in the line that it's an invoice from DWR. So what this does is it relieves some of the burden on the West Rack, which helps us stay at 0% for that year, preserves reserves for future expenses along those lines. And then obviously, if the West Rack isn't going up, that's not pressure on the domestic fund and it's a justifiable expense here. So if the board's uncomfortable with that and we want to stay with the status quo, then now's the time to tell me.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's defensible too. I would do it, pay it out of the tax.
Well, I want to talk about it.
That's a close session discussion request. Okay. But, so that's the context of the discussion.
But thank you for clarifying, I thought it was the full cost of the water.
No, the water cost is still in West Rack. Yeah, this is just State Water Project transportation cost. So when you look at the graphics of this, you see the significance of going to 100% allocation. You have in blue being where we were at last year, what we budgeted for this year, and then on the far right side, what we're budgeting for next year. A total, because that's just water purchases, the expense of $94 million in the fund, we're actually still planning to deficit spend out of that fund and use some of the reserves. And so, but it's a large amount. Here you get the breakdown in the water purchase costs. The fixed amounts, which are the far left, vary from year to year depending on credits we receive back from the state or their allocation or what happened or what particular capital projects they're working on in the system. So that, it's fixed, but it does vary from year to year. So a little bit of a decrease there, so that's welcome relief. Table A variable, which is the per acre foot amount we pay to the state, you see the jump there, that reflects the increase in the allocation. And then you'll see Yuba's at zero and if the proposal's accepted, the 2.4 million being paid for Rosedale and that new Met storage cost at the 3.1. On the revenue side, you'll see an increase in the tax revenues coming in. Last year, we got a little less than 80 million, we had thought we'd be at 82. By next year, we think that'll be at 90. This is all staying at that 11 cents. And so all of this change is due to the recent hyperactive growth in the real estate market. Going forward, we think that that'll moderate, if not slow considerably. But this takes into account real changes already in property values. And so this slide covers what I already discussed, which is if we stay at the 11 cents, we will be under target for three years. Essentially, we build up our reserve balance to that new proposed target. By FY '27, we'd be there and that would be the time to reevaluate the tax rate. At that time is when we think we'll have much better data on the Delta Conveyance Project and sites. And so either the tax rate will need to be increased to cover those new costs, or we can stay the same or even lower it depending on what the circumstances are then.
So it's possible over the next few years that that fund could grow, if we have low allocations, could grow well over $100 million?
It would grow faster than anticipated and then we'd have to reevaluate the tax rate question then.
Yeah, it's just so hard to say. I think we need to be ready to buy water, you know? Just, we don't know. Maybe we'll have three what years in a row.
So last slide, canal rate options, this was a request last time. In the proposal we were looking at with canal, there's a lot on this, I'll just generally describe it, that our base rates would need to go up over the next three years, 3.5%. This was, in essence, to cover the escalating costs on the QSA water, both in quantity and in price, that's all done by contract. The new water demand that we have on the system, on the Oasis Project, incrementally, it doesn't cover the full price of this, so there's an overall rate pressure and that's where you're seeing here, as well as the debt services coming from the lateral replaced $60 million project we have with the Bureau. And so eventually that all gets fit into the expense requirements. If we didn't do the rate increase next year, that 3.5% base rate cost, the idea is that future years would go from 3.5 to a little over 5 and that would stay within the existing Prop 218 limit. And if we overall said, well, let's not raise rates until we really had to, and so that's 0% for the next three years, which is the current 218 limit, the equivalent would be, instead of 10% in the last two years, about 15.8%. So that just shows you the order of magnitude by delaying the rate increases to get to the same amount of revenue by the end of the five-year period. The right part of the slide shows that if we go with no rate increases over three years, we will be under the, well, that was the proposed target, then by a little bit. So it's manageable, but the key issue here is you have ongoing expenses that are going up by contract and revenues that won't be sufficient to cover it. So eventually, the reserves will continue to go down until rates go up to cover those ongoing expenses. And it's whenever we decide to raise rates to match that, that determines how big of a gap we're trying to plug. So, I'll stop there. On that note, this would be the very helpful time on rates to get a recommendation for how to draft the final budget document. Nothing's going to change in the sense of what staff's proposing between now and June for the adoption. And so as a reminder, we were proposing the 5.5 on domestic, the 8.5 on sanitation, and then you have your canal options here. And so this isn't final actions, it's just direction to prepare the documents.
So why didn't you give us one on domestic?
We covered domestic in detail last month and I didn't hear a request for a different option.
I think we had pretty good consensus on domestic. I mean, on this one, I'm not. You don't make a strong case for an increase this year, honestly. That's how I look at it.
Yeah, the practical impact here is we'll have the additional revenues from the Bureau that are coming in from the Cuchilla, they'll hit here. To what degree that we're wrong or expenses go up, you'll be eating into that available funding.
Yeah, I understand.
No, that's just, yeah, just the disclaimer.
I'd leave this one alone personally.
Back on Slide 31, on the State Water Project storage, you didn't show anything for the previous years, is that just because of that 50% threshold?
Right, if it's under 50%, the assumption is it gets delivered in that year and that doesn't need to.
But it's been in there.
It's been in our contract at least for the last few years.
That's what I figured. Thank you.
I guess we can move on? I don't know.
So what I'm planning on with the direction I've been given is to present to the board documents which will reflect a 5.5 for domestic, 8.5 for sanitation, and in my hearing, 0 for canal.
Zero for canal, zero for racks.
Okay, and 0 for racks for the June board meeting. Okay. And that's it.
Thanks, Rick. Thank you, excellent presentation, again.
I've been working on this for a lot of years.
So we also have our SCADA update, did you bake a cake? I mean.
Not yet, June 30th.
Are you doing a cake?
We will, pizza, actually not pizza, something healthy.
June 30th? All right, yeah, go ahead, buddy.
Yes, sir. Good morning, President Powell, members of the board and colleagues, staff and guests. Today, we have a presentation on the SCADA master plan update. It is basically our last update. I can't believe it is over six years now that we've been working on this. So we are obviously very grateful for the support from the board, general manager, staff, our partners, NDI, which is here, CGR, who's done a great job in helping us manage this program. And basically, we have accomplished all of the objectives that we have, that we laid out and proposed. There will continue to be work to optimize the system because you always need that. And I'll be working with Assistant General Manager Dan Charlton to do that because there are obviously other things that need to be improved, such as the replacement of the RTUs. But Jim Kennedy will give you a more detailed update on that and what we have done and what are some of the things that we're planning to do in the future and essentially wrap it up. So with that, I'll hand it over to Jim. Thank you. And I'll be available here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Luis. Good morning, President Powell and members of the board. Just for the video record, my name's Jim Kennedy. I'm a Principal of CGR Management Consultants and we've been working under contract for CBWD for some years at this point, I would say. I've got a brief agenda, I just want to reflect on the goal of this program, where we got to, what remains to be done, and to talk about the next initiative for information systems. And then I'll take any questions that you might have. So the goal, and I think I've been clear about this ever since we began this program, was to update CBWD's SCADA capabilities by implementing the initiatives detailed in the SCADA system master plan within six years. I was one of the authors of the SCADA master plan, so it is a delight to be here at the completion of the implementation of that plan. And we defined the six years really to be June 30th, 2023, because it fell at the end of the financial year. And so it's slightly longer than six calendar years, but it is nevertheless really a six-year implementation. And I'm here really to tell you that the goal of the SCADA master plan has been met. We've met our budgetary objectives and we've exceeded the budgetary objectives. Our technical quality objectives, I think, have been exceeded in every case. I know that you've been able to see the new control rooms and various other features, which I'll talk about in a little bit more detail. But really, this has been a high-quality project. The scope is included more than we'd anticipated within that budget. And really, the more important thing is that the expected outcomes and the benefits that we were planning to trap have been achieved. We've also left the district with a gift of a five-year roadmap for the delivery of information technology services up until the 2028 period. Now, of course, that's a living document and I expect it to continue to evolve, but you have a plan. And this new technology, and I'm going to say this investment in new technology, because just as you make investments with your reserves, this is an investment that you have made in technology. It prices more like a derivative, actually more like an option than maybe a fixed income investment. But nevertheless, it does enable many opportunities for improvement throughout the district. So this is obviously difficult to read, but is a framework that is probably familiar to you. It basically identifies the 11 initiatives and the eight phases that we have been through on this journey of implementation of the SCADA master plan to where we get to today, which is Phase Eight, which is closeout. So we are simply wrapping up all of the initiatives that are still active and there's a number of them. We have a little bit of work to do and we have about a month or so to do that before the pizza party that has already been mentioned. The schedule that we set was initially aggressive. We put a four-year timeframe on that, knowing that we would not accomplish a four-year timeframe. And our strategy for managing schedule was simply to manage the slippage from that four years and to create a sense of urgency. And we've managed to do that while accommodating expansion of scope such that we are going to complete within time. That is to say, there's plenty more work that can be done on control systems at an organization like this, but we've met the objective, we've met the goal, so we're going to move on at this point. So let me reflect on some of these key accomplishments because I think they are important for everybody to understand. There's a new SCADA system that controls the Cuchilla Canal, the domestic water sites, the non-potable sites, groundwater, sanitation and irrigation infrastructure. That's more than. So let me reflect on some of these key accomplishments because I think they are important for everybody to understand. There's a new SCADA system that controls the Coachella Canal, the domestic water sites, the non-potable sites, groundwater, sanitation, and irrigation infrastructure. That's more than 300 physical sites for which we have cut over from a legacy system that was close to 30 years old to a modern package-based system. We've implemented a new microwave wide-area network. And as part of that, there were two new radio towers and 54 microwave links, which are detailed there. We've implemented the supervisory control aspects at the three warps, not the distributed control systems that accompany each piece of equipment, and I think that's something that needs to be looked at in the future. But nevertheless, those warps can operate with the new system. We have a new security system that has been put in place, and there is still a little bit of testing work that's going on. There are hundreds of motion sensors, glass break sensors, door alarms, gate controls, et cetera, that are involved in that. We've also put in place new IT policies, procedures, frameworks, and what I would call generally accepted good practices. And as I mentioned, a five-year strategic plan for technology going forward. I should also mention that the district has been recognized with three quite prestigious awards in the realm of information technology. And I think that is a reflection on the growth and advancement that has happened within the IT group over the last six years. In part, that has had a necessity, but in part, it's been out of the sheer hard work and willingness to go along with best practices that were presented. Just to dwell on the finances for a moment, we were given an original CIP authorization of $20 million. We've spent a little bit over $17 million. We'll get to over $18 million by the time the whole program is done and dusted. But the cash flow has been broadly as expected. It started to ramp up from 2016 through 2017. We got to a peak in 2019 and then came back to a sort of comfortable expected $2 million a year for the last few years. Graphically, it looks like this. That is to say, we never spent more than we planned, and we've always earned more value than the dollars we spent. And we will ultimately, I expect, come out at $18.25 million on this program, meaning we have a positive variance of 1.7. It isn't $1.75. All figures are in millions. It's 1.75 million dollars that is unexpended on this program and at a 9% return.
What is earned value?
Earned value is probably better expressed as the budgeted cost of work performed. So if you budgeted to spend $1 million on something and you only spent $500,000 on it, your earned value is $1 million because you budgeted to spend the $1 million.
So did you have any way, and I've asked this question before, and I don't think it's ever been answered, but have we been able to estimate the amount of increased efficiency and productivity that has been saved by the installation of this system?
It's difficult to do, and we have only estimated what would be necessary to pay for these kinds of things. And we estimated that at about 5% in terms of IT and 1% in terms of general staff. And if you achieve that kind of efficiency, then you more than pay for the technology. But we haven't actually gone around interviewing and trying to estimate specifically how much people did it, how much people gained. But I think in terms of staff, you know, the work that they had to do to maintain the old system was bordering on ridiculous. I mean, it was hours spent on eBay trying to find obsolete parts. It was contacting vendors who used to work on these things 20 years ago. It became a Herculean effort to keep these things going, and usually done in the small hours of the morning when something critical fails at an unfortunate moment.
It would be safe to say that savings is far more than what we spent.
Yeah, and the non-tangible benefits, just, you know, expand that exponentially. So in terms of work that still needs to be done in the future, of course, control systems don't end when the program ends. This is something you are going to have in perpetuity. There's ongoing staff training. There's always the need for better and more detailed documentation. We still have a number of improvements at the wastewater reclamation plants that need to be made to the systems. We were not able to give everybody everything they wanted because physically, some of the things they wanted didn't exist in terms of telemetry or automation within the plants. That work still needs to be done. There should also be considered a rationalization of the supervisory control and the distributed control systems at the warps. Right now, we use a data concentrator to collect all of the PLC data into a single device before passing it to supervisory control. A Fuqua architecture, I think, could eliminate that need and could have a single unified platform across all control systems. You still have a program of micro RT replacements. I estimate there's probably 260 legacy devices in the field right now. They still need replacing, and I think they're going to be replaced at at least 50 a year. We did complete more than 60 replacements at various sites. Of course, there's ongoing support and maintenance for the system. There's ongoing security monitoring, and I think cybersecurity has become an increasing topic, even in the context of just the time spent on the program. And there are miscellaneous optimizations that have been enabled by the new SCADA system. There's lots of time of use and a variety of automations and different schemes that can be implemented now that the technology is available to support those forms of automation. Of course, all of that future work has been wrapped into what we are calling the IT Roadmap 2028. Research has shown that any organization is only as good as its last strategic move. For the Information Systems Department and for others involved in this initiative, it has been the SCADA master plan. However, the next initiative, and this starts in July, immediately following the end of this program, we expect the Information Systems Department to vigorously pursue IT Roadmap 2028. There are eight initiatives contained within that roadmap and a total of 24 projects detailing cybersecurity disaster recovery, a critical aspect. And when you talk about reserves, having a reserve for cybersecurity incidents is just as important as having a reserve for other kinds of water infrastructure incidents. IT service management, the continual improvement of delivery of IT services. Core system replacements, you need a new enterprise resource planning system, financial accounting system, et cetera. You've talked about that on a number of occasions. The time has come to start undertaking that work, as well as further work on your content management, collaboration, and GIS and asset management systems. Tremendous work being done on the asset management system over the last few years, but there's still things that can and will be done with that. Obviously, item number four is the SCADA work we talked about on the previous slide. And then business process improvement, which of course is the reason for information technology. There's no point having information technology if it doesn't make your processes any better, as well as the underlying IT infrastructure, the development of staff, both so that we get the best out of our labor dollar and our staff have the best experience and satisfaction from their work, and just the day-to-day keeping the lights on and improving everything that IT does. So I think the next five years will be hopefully as exciting as the last five years, and I hope that CVWD and the Information Systems Department achieves as much success as they did. I hope that, and I claim no involvement in that, although I am involved in the AV system in the boardroom currently. But I will say, this has been a tremendous effort of teamwork, and I really think everybody came together and gave this program their very best. I think the board has been supportive throughout this entire process, and I couldn't ask for better support from any board. I think the general manager, Mr. Barrett, and the assistant general managers have also done their best to support the program at any time that it needed it. And then management and staff in the departments, particularly operations and maintenance, including, I have to call out, the electronics shop and facilities folks, finance, engineering, the clerk of the board. And in particular, I give a lot of credit to Luis. Luis has demonstrated a total willingness to be open-minded to ideas and willingness to take on the leadership mantle that was necessary to move a project like this forward. I also want to give a shout out to all of our vendors, particularly Northern Digital, who are showing their support by having four representatives here today. And I know that I leave the system in very capable hands when we turn over all of the support and maintenance to Northern Digital. I'll mention also Saipar, the legacy vendor, who although are now at the end of their own lifecycle, went out of their way to help us and support us in a very technically challenging aspect of the project. And I have to mention two big vendors, Aviat on the wide-area network microwaves and Aviva, the software vendor, who I think you will have a long relationship with. They are the world's largest automation software. They have more users than anybody else, and I think you'll be very happy with that. So on a personal note, this has been a delightful project. I very much, I said on day one, I was looking forward to understanding life in the valley. And as I drove over the pass into the valley this morning, and the gloom from the drizzle in Los Angeles lifted and the sunshine of the valley sort of came through, I was reminded what a glorious community this is and what an absolute joy it has been to spend the last six years with you. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Are you going to give the money to Rick?
Actually, actually...
Luis will answer that.
So as I mentioned, real quick, thank you again, Jim and your staff, for tremendous work on supporting us in this program and our vendors and partners. So these additional funding, we have to replace, continue to replace the RTUs, and I am working with Dan Charlton to continue that program. And so, in fact, he has some already to be replaced. So it's still, you know, it's to continue to move this process forward. But to answer Director Aguilar's question earlier, one of the main goals, and I think where we can quantify quickly, is that we have reduced risk significantly because, again, we were dealing with a 30-year-old system. And again, trying to reduce our liabilities is critical, right, to mitigate these potential huge expenses. And so this is very important for that. In addition to that, staff now has the ability to remote in and actually see the system. That was not a feature that existed. So a lot of the, we can literally control the system from anywhere, anywhere in the world if we want to. Obviously, there's a lot of concerns with security, but that's a huge flexibility. You can imagine how much time we save on that. We have now a program for iPads in the district, and basically, any operation staff can remote in, assuming Dan allows it. But, you know, there is basically that's available. And also, we have tremendous opportunities for optimization, such as reducing energy costs, right, and things like that with this new system. Better integration, so all that, without necessarily giving you a dollar amount, you can see that there's, will be, and we already seen tremendous savings. And hopefully, that will continue to be the trend. Ultimately, that's our goal in IT, right, to streamline, to optimize, and to provide more reliable systems. And with that, again, thank you for your support. You will continue to see me out here because there's more to be replaced, but for now, this is it. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Onto board general comments, Director Aguilar.
Yeah, I just want to mention, Robert's not here, but to congratulate Robert on his appointment as president of the State Water Contractors Association. That's very cool, and I think he'll do a great job.
Well, I'll be interested to kind of hear some more details about our Colorado River decision that came out yesterday, or actually the day before. And Robert Chang, again, I want to say congratulations.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, see, just was just planning on congratulating Robert on his appointment, and that's it.
Yeah, and the Colorado River thing is a proposal at this point, right? So we're almost at the agreement stage. Dan, you're here. It's not a comment. Do we have a date when water's going to flow in Oasis? Do we know that? People have been asking me. Carrie?
Yeah, so, yeah, please. Yeah, while she's coming up, we...
Just curious, I mean, this was, I think June was the last I heard.
Yeah, one of the holdups was, as you might guess, IID and their requirement to provide power, but Carrie's found a way through that, so...
So, yes, IID was saying that they wouldn't be able to get us power until October. But we have, we have worked with them, and we're assisting with paying overtime so their crews can work on the weekends. And now they've told us that they would be able to meet our June 30th date. So as long as they come through, but we are prioritizing. We're working on, like, the first phase of the system, I think, like the O1 pump station. And we're hoping once we get power to certain facilities that we can start commissioning those and getting those in service. So our target is still, you know, with getting power by the end of June, having everything up and running in July, basically. There's still some things that the contractor has to do once power is to all the sites. But, you know, we're going out there, we're talking to the customers, figuring out who has the facilities on their side in order to start accepting water. And right now, it's about 50%.
Yeah, okay.
So...
All right. Good. Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie.
We're meeting with IID...
June 1st.
Next Thursday. So we'll thank them for their promptness.
Yes, we're providing...
I'll let you do that, sir.
We're providing the general manager with our general engineering notes, so any other outstanding items, we're making a list for you.
I think his last day is next Wednesday, right?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you, Carrie. That's my only comment. I know people are really excited about this, the Colorado proposal, so we'll talk more about that at close session. Do we have any board requests for future agenda items?
We are tracking, the board did ask for a briefing on stormwater, so we are tracking that probably for the fall sometime.
Okay. Meeting reports? Why don't we get into that? May 8th, that one, I did not attend that DVBA one, so I'll take that off. May 9th, Nelson's not here. May 10th, the Colorado River Board, Estrada?
I was not there.
Same thing with the sixth agency. So...
Same thing.
May 11th, Energy Environment, Director Bianco.
I was not there.
Okay. This is easy. Let's see, we did have the, we did have the two-on-two with CVWD and City of Coachella because I was there. And Vice President Estrada, Jim, we had the city manager and council member...
Galarza.
Yeah, Galarza. And Mayor phoned in. He was remote, but just went over the, a lot of things happening between our agency and the city with some projects, et cetera. May 16th, Cathedral City, State of the City. Did that happen?
It did happen, and I was there. It was at the Hilton Doubletree, and well-attended. And, you know, they typically go over all their projects and what's pending. And they did mention that they had the highest number of residential and commercial permits issued in the valley up to last month. So they're, as they said, they're on fire.
Yeah. Crazy, huh?
Yeah. Thanks.
Good. Thank you. This was a study session that was canceled, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah, the 16th. We covered that today. Disadvantaged communities on the 17th. I attended that remotely. Go ahead, Kessler.
Yeah, it's our bi-monthly meeting. I think it went well. A lot of good updates. Heard good updates on the IXTP. Looks like Coachella Valley Housing Coalition is looking forward to that being completed, which I think we are going to be able to deliver on that. Also getting pretty close to going out to bid, I think, for the Avenue 66. So that's a huge accomplishment. And one of the things in particular that I reminded staff about was to make sure to coordinate with the State Water Board. They have expressed interest in... in participating, given that they, that they've given us about $24 million for that particular project. And so, so as we get closer to that, let's just make sure that we coordinate with the, with the State Water Board and Assembly Member Garcia and some other folks who have been critical in providing that funding. And it was, it was a good meeting.
Great. Ledge Committee?
That was canceled.
Was canceled also. Okay, good.
I think we're, I think we're trying to reschedule, so.
Yeah, all right, fair enough. You know, I had one other that, that was probably reported on at the last board meeting, but I was absent. So that was just the May 3 tribal mediation that Vice President Estrada and I participated in. We have another one of those coming up, too. Any other meetings?
Yes, I did, did have a meeting with Lafco, with their executive director and some of the staff. I, I drove out there to Lafco to just get a sense of what the schedule for Lafco looks like. This is the first year that I'll be part of that, so I wanted to get a chance to, to talk to Gary Thompson and get a sense of, you know, what does the year look like, and meet their staff. And so I went out there to pay them a visit, and then we had a pretty good conversation.
Do you recall what date that was, sir?
That was the 16th, right after our, I believe we had our own meeting.
No, it was canceled.
No, the 9th, I'm sorry.
The 9th.
The 9th. That's, yeah, we, I took off after our meeting.
Any other meetings? Is there a motion to approve per diem for the meetings reported on?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Got past 4:00. General Manager report.
Yes, sir. The only thing I got is the COVID report. We got one qualifying case and one person off work. That's it. Three so, three so far for the month of May. That's all I've got. Again, I'll pass on the board's congratulations to Robert. He's off until 30. He'll be back in Thursday.
Busy. Council report?
I won't pass dates.
Do we have any departmental reports?
No, sir.
Besides the ones we already heard?
I thought they were good. I thought Rick did a good job.
At this time, the board will recess into closed session to consider that one item that's listed on the agenda. And I guess we'll reconvene here after closed session?
Yeah, so we have to walk over.
We're going to go over there to Romans, but we're going to come back.
And there are snacks, so take snacks if you'd like some.
See you later. We are, are we on? Yeah?
Yes.
Well, okay, so regular meeting is hereby reconvened. We do not have any reporting, reportable action from the closed session. And hearing no, with no further business, we are adjourned.